Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call to order our Paramount Planning Commission meeting for April 3rd, 2024. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call of members, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Timmons.
President.
Vice Chair Sparza. Chair Weisenberger.
Here. Agenda item number one, approval of minutes for March 6th, 2024. Need a motion to approve, please.
Timmons. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Okay.
Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza. Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, um, let's see here. Any public comments tonight, John?
No public comments.
Okay, let's go to the public hearings then, in new business. Item number two, conditional use permit number 954. This is a request by Lydia Alice with the Alice Kitchen and Bar to expand existing alcoholic beverage sales for onsite consumption to include distilled spirits at 15516 Paramount Boulevard Suite B in the general commercial zone. This project is a Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Article 19, Section 15301 of the CEQA guidelines. Okay, we have a staff report tonight?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant has requested that this item be continued a month, so it's recommended that you open the public hearing and continue it to the May 8th, 2024 meeting.
Okay. All right, very good. In that case, um, let's open the public hearing portion tonight, and then we will... Now, do we need a motion to continue? Okay, so we open the public hearing, but we will need a motion then to continue this for...till next month.
Timmons, so moved that we continue this until our next meeting, next month.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza. Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay. Agenda item number three, conditional use permit number 957. This is a request by Jesus Soto with the Soto Blueprints for Elijah Park to operate a used car dealership at 15523 Lakewood Boulevard in the general commercial zone. This project is a Class 1 categorical exemption, Article 19, Section 15301 of the CEQA guidelines. And we have a staff report for this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This item is a request for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a used car dealership on Lakewood Boulevard. Up until 2021, a used car dealership had been located at this property, which is at 15523 Lakewood Boulevard in the general commercial zone. Given that the use has ceased operation for more than six months, a conditional use permit is required, and Assistant Planning Director John King will go over this item with you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Chair Weisenberger and Commissioners. And this application has a...call it a companion application with the Development Review Board, so I'll try my best to get into the detail of the design review, the architecture, and the site improvements, and if you choose to do so, we can get into more detail during the Development Review Board portion of this evening. So again, they are applying to operate a used car dealership at 15523 Lakewood Boulevard, and it's in the C3 Zone, again with the DRA application, and this property is on the east portion of town, you know, right on the city border at Lakewood Boulevard, and it's...as with many properties in Paramount, it's an interesting property. In this case, it's a very narrow and deep property. At the back is a mobile home park that has been there for many years, for decades, generations, you could say, and it's in the back, and that for years was the wheel trailer park, and there's a new property owner who took over and rebranded it as Elijah Park or Elijah's Park. And at the front is the commercial portion that also...well, for many years, not as many years as the residences, but for decades was a...used for used car sales, for car sales, and it hasn't been that...that hasn't been the case for a few years. So a little history, from 1985 until 2021, a conditional use permit was active allowing car sales at the property. 2021, you know, that's during kind of the peak COVID months. The business at that time didn't do so well, so they closed, and as what the municipal code states, if a property is vacant for 180 days or more, or if the use stops for more than 180 days, then it kind of resets that CUP is inapplicable. So a new property owner, a new owner that would want to restart the car sales would have to get a new conditional use permit, and so that's what the applicant is applying for. Again, the property owner purchased the property about a year ago, and the property owner will also operate the car business. They're proposing to operate as a car dealership from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday to Friday, only in that front part of the property. There would be two employees. Trucks would be required to unload on the property itself, but in doing so, would not impede access to the residential portion of the property. You have to make sure that, you know, there has to be free access, especially for safety reasons. Test drives of any of those cars would be limited to commercial streets, so no test drives would be allowed on residential streets, and there would be no servicing of vehicles on the property, just only sales. Show the cars, sell the cars. So this slide shows what's...this is only the front portion, so we kind of reduced the site plan just to the front part of the property. The back part will remain. So the...on the left is existing, how it is now, and the right is what's proposed. So there are some very slight changes from just looking at this. You'll see on the right side of each of these is Lakewood Boulevard. There's a...the main driveway is the top driveway, and you'll see that there are three planters along the front interspersed from the driveways. Those planters are only five feet deep. The city code requires a 10-foot front setback, so you can see in the proposed, the planters are double the size, so there'd be more of an opportunity to kind of freshen up the property with new landscaping and the sprinklers or the irrigation that go with them. The parking lot would be repaved and restriped, and to do that, they would relocate the one Americans with Disabilities Act compliant parking space, the ADA stall. So right now, it's toward the front, so you can see on the left view, kind of at the top, they would move it closer to the building so to comply with accessibility, so you know, it kind of makes sense. It's closer to the...where the salespeople have their offices. And then you could kind of see on the bottom, on the proposed view, there's a trash enclosure. It may have to be enlarged a little bit more than what's shown here, but they will construct a trash enclosure that will include a trash bin and a recycle bin, meeting all requirements. Here's a view of...so right now, just to back up a bit, the building, it's a small building, 324 square feet. It's very boxy-looking. If...I'll show a photo in a second, but...so they would add color and stucco to the outside. They've already started to replace the windows with permits. They would include the stone veneer around the bottom portion of the building. They would include a decorative metal awning over the entry door, some banding just to kind of break up the facade. They would increase the height, so they would have a parapet around the top, and that's to give a little extra look to the building and also to conceal the mechanical equipment on the rooftop. And they would have...they would include what's called a cornice, that decorative feature along the roof line on all four sides, decorative lighting as well. So some of the conditions, again, the trash enclosure, there's now chain link fencing. It looks like it's temporary chain link fencing, but we wanted to make sure that that would be removed as part of this application. The...again, the planters would be expanded. Also, the block walls and poles, they have some colors that are kind of little...don't quite fit with the neighborhood, so those would be painted following review and approval by the planning division, and they would install security cameras. So in general, fix up the property, and here's...here are those pictures, so you can see the building. Right now, it has that extra plywood encasing it just for...well, it's vacant, just to kind of secure it, but it would be...so that would be improved. You can see the parking lot, the asphalt is in really bad shape, so not just to reslurry it, but actually to repave that parking lot. That's the requirement. There's that chain link fencing. The...they pulled out the landscaping already in preparation, you know, with your...if you do approve this, then they would expand the planters on the front, and they would paint those...you could see the colors on the wall and the light poles. Also, the bollards, the metal posts in the ground, you see they're pointing in different directions. They've been hit by trucks, apparently, so those will be straightened or replaced or repaired, good as new. Here's another view, so kind of a before and after of that boxy building and what it will look like, a lot nicer. So upon analysis, this is an appropriate commercial zone, and the size is adequate for this type of use. There's a long history of car sales. We took a look at code enforcement issues through the years. There were, you know, some minor issues in the past, but not directly related to the auto sales. Minor issues, and there's kind of a bigger issue with the mobile home park, but that's more on the residential side. With that, we are recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? May I ask a question? Is the applicant...is he the old owner or is this a new?
He's been the owner...well, he or I should say they, it's the family. They have been the owner for about a year.
I mean, they're not the ones that operated the cars...the car dealership before?
That's right, and I did look at business license records from about the last 15 years. During that time, there were about four operators of the car lot, so they kind of came and went, yeah, the ups and downs of the economy.
So the...John, the car operators came and left, but the property was still owned by one individual?
Yes, well, one trust toward the end, who went through some kind of transitional phase. They officially sold it a year ago.
Question, Mr. President. I know that they know their business, but operating Monday through Friday for car sales?
Yes.
It's like Saturday and Sundays are the days that people are out buying cars.
We had the same reaction. We did not outright question it. That's...that is what they include on the application, but you're right. We shared the...you know, we're a little inquisitive about that.
A follow-up. So if they were to operate on a Saturday and Sunday, would they still be in compliance?
They would not. They would be in violation.
They'd have to come back and amend the conditional use permit.
So what happens, John, in a violation like that? John?
Well, because it's a CUP, you have a couple of options. One of it is that code enforcement gets involved and tries to get voluntary compliance. If voluntary compliance is not successful, then the option is to come back to the Planning Commission to revoke the CUP, which would render the use invalid.
Well... Did they have any answers regarding why they wouldn't sell on the weekend?
No, we actually did not ask. It's...it's a good question, but we left, you know, left it to their business decision, you could say.
Very good. Well, let's open the public hearing portion. Have we got any testimony tonight, John?
Uh, no testimony.
Okay, no testimony, so we need a motion to close the public hearing portion. Gonzalez moves to close this public hearing. Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza. Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, so we need then entertain a motion to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 24010, approving this request to operate a used car dealership on Lakewood Boulevard in Paramount. Gonzalez moves this motion forward, 957. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza. Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Agenda item number four. This is a request by Peter Hung of Boba Time Incorporated to operate a tea shop with indoor customer seating at 16280 Paramount Boulevard Suite C in the PD-PS Zone. This project is a Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Article 19, Section 15301 of the CEQA guidelines. Can we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This item is a request for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a tea shop with customer seating at 16280 Paramount Boulevard. This is the former location of a Starbucks, which ceased operating in 2020 and moved to Alondra Boulevard, west of Paramount Boulevard. We are very happy to have a popular tea shop opening at this location, as we will...as we believe it will help to reactivate the pond, public open space, and Associate Planner Ivan Reyes will give you the complete details.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Honorable Chair, Members of the Commission. So I'm here to present conditional use permit number 958. So this is a request to operate a tea shop with indoor customer seating located at 16280 Paramount Boulevard Suite C. This is in the PDPS, the Plan Development with Performance Standards Zone. The property measures 11,360 square feet. The building, it's a three-suite building, measuring a little over 4,000 square feet, and then the suite itself, where this business will be operating out of the former Starbucks, is 1,424 square feet. So just to give you some background, it's not just any tea shop, it's Boba Time, which is...has been established since 2003. They have over 80 locations throughout California. So on the right-hand side, you see a map of Southern California, LA and OC, with all the different shops that are operating, and then some of them, the gray area, shows the ones that are coming soon, so they're expanding rather quickly, and they specialize in milk teas, coffee, smoothies, shaved ice, hot and ice beverages, and a variety of other small eats and bites. So for...it's Boba Time, the business that will be operating here in Paramount, they're proposing hours of operation Monday through Sunday, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. They will have a total of 10 employees. 24 indoor customer seatings are being proposed, and I will go into that in the floor plan later on this evening, and then they do not have any live entertainment that they're proposing. On the right-hand side, you see kind of just...that's a mix of their drinks that they have, different flavors, and just to give you just some more...more flavors and just all the different varieties. They have over 140 different flavors to choose from, so it's a...yeah, you'll definitely find something there. So just to give you some context of the site, this is downtown Paramount, so in the heart of Paramount, so you have the Town Center West, and then you have the Town Center East. Really popular, and have a variety of retail and food establishments for both of these centers. And then if you focus on the...on the bottom there, it's in yellow, that indicates the property for this business, just north of the Paramount Pond, off of Paramount and Jackson Street. And just to give you a close-up here of the subject site, where Boba Time will be located, the other existing businesses, Waikiki Hawaiian Grill and Bastion Robbins, are on the same building. And then the yellow shows the property line for this, for the Town Center East. So here's a floor plan of what they're proposing, so 24 customer seats indicated in yellow. You also have a kitchen where the food preparation for the drinks, and then there's two bathrooms located in this suite. So here's exterior photos. As John mentioned, this was the site of the former Starbucks. There has been no activity since, so everything is pretty much intact with...from the previous use. There were some minor conditions of approval for updating the suite, where I did notice there was a couple of dilapidated refurbished...the building needs some maintenance. So now with the new tenant, Boba Time, there would be some refurbishments meant to the building, to the outside concrete areas, and I want to take your attention to the mural there. That's a tile mural showing the Iceland, which is right down the street from this property. We did include a condition of approval to maintain that mural. It's tile, so any type of...there's any graffiti or any type of maintenance that needs to be done, the tenant will have to just maintain that as needed. So for the analysis, the proposed business is located in an appropriate zone. It's within the downtown Paramount area of the central business district. It's compatible with the surrounding businesses. Like I mentioned, there's a lot of food establishments already there, so this will go hand-in-hand with those type of businesses, and the location is adequate in size and sufficient parking will be provided. So with that, it is recommended to adopt Resolution 24011, approving conditional use permit number 958, and we do have the applicant in the audience, if you have any questions regarding this use. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. So that's the...that's the Boba itself, yeah. Boba, so they're...it's like jelly, yeah, like tapioca, yeah, type of things. They're really squishy, they're chewy, they're sweet.
They don't really have a lot of flavor.
They don't. They go in flavor more with the drink itself, yeah, but it's a little...
This would be a great added facility for anyone that hasn't tried Boba. Yes, I agree. May I say something too, Mr. Chairman?
24. 24 seats, indoor seats only, yes. Yes, no outdoor.
I was just gonna say, it's gonna pair really well with the ice cream, right next to it, and then the Waikiki on the corner. Really? Yeah. And the Bobas are really good.
Happy to have them. I am very pleased that they made...that it was made a requirement to maintain that mural. I really like that, and I think that was a wise decision.
Yes.
So I'm pleased to hear that. Okay, let's open the public hearing portion of this. Have we got any testimony tonight, John?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, no testimony, and we're gonna need a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza. Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, then we need a motion then to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 24011, approving this request to operate a tea shop, Boba Time, at...on Paramount Boulevard there, by the Paramount Pond.
Timmons, so moved?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded then. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza. Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, let's go to...I'm gonna have to say it right next time. I think I said Boba Time. Boba Time, it's like one word. Boba Time, yeah, one word, I guess, okay. So let's go to agenda item number five, oral reports. John, anything tonight?
Uh, yes, at the City Council meeting last week, John King gave a presentation regarding the general plan. It's a state requirement that yearly we update the state and the city council on how we're doing implementing the different programs in the general plan, which includes the housing element, and that was it. Thank you.
Now, John, the election results from last month, those have been finalized, is that correct?
Uh, they were certified, yes.
Okay. They'll be next week, counseling next week, they'll be certified. Okay, very good. Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, let's go to number six, comments, any from our city attorney? No comments, good. Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any comments from our commissioners?
May I ask, John, on the report you get to the city council, and how are we doing in implementing the housing project?
Well, thanks for asking. We're on track. We are actually on track, so there were about 33 homes permitted, so it does depend on its perspective, right? So we are...we are required to plan for...well, we did plan for 364 homes between...to be built or constructed between 2021 and 2029, and yes, you know, more homes may mean more parking issues, so we do have that side of the equation, but we are happy to have Paramount residents ideally stay here in town as, you know, they move out from their larger family into their own homes, so we do have that. But bottom line is, yes, we are on track.
Did you say the Brown Yard Building? Which one?
Yeah, Brown Yard Building, yeah. Yeah, so we're working on that right now, the Clearwater specific plan, so it's a whole new plan. We're a couple of months into it. We're doing a lot of public outreach, so yeah, we're well into planning for that.
So we have a plan, then it's up to the property owner if they want to go forward and sell or redevelop. That remains to be seen.
I have one question I'd like to ask, too. I understand at the ambassador or the chamber breakfast, you introduced the one-stop shop. Will we be told about that, too?
Yes, actually, I gave a brief presentation, but actually, building and safety manager, Johnny Reitmer, he gave an excellent presentation. I'll just briefly say what I did. I was there just to introduce what the city's business license process is, which is an online process, and from what we hear, for the most part, it's been great. Instead of filling out tons of paperwork, you do it online if you're a new business. But Johnny, do you want to just briefly speak on the...what you presented on the online changes, kind of similar to what you...
Johnny, we haven't done that to the planning commission? We did it to Econ.
I think we did it some time ago. I don't know if it was the same thing or...
It was.
Similar, very similar.
I should have been there. I wasn't, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Was your question about what Andrew was proposing to you, shared something about the one-stop?
No, if the presentation was different than what the economic development board got.
It was pretty much the same.
Pretty much the same.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Has it been decided and exactly what's going to be going in there by...at the Lindsay Lumber location?
Yes, it's...well, it's looking like Sprouts, Starbucks, Panera Bread with a drive-thru, and Panda Express, if not Panda...stop, what's it...how do you pronounce that? The chicken?
Zanku.
No.
Zanku.
Zanku Chicken.
Oh, Zanku.
Yes.
Zanku Chicken.
So there'll be four total uses, so it's either... So there'll be four total uses, so it's either Panda Express, but we're hoping for Zanku Chicken ourselves.
So you said Sprouts, Starbucks.
Panera with a drive-through.
The drive-through.
And the chicken.
And the chicken place.
Or Panda Express.
I want Panda.
Do you?
Is the other one, the first one you mentioned, is that Chinese food?
Panda, yes.
No, I mean the other one.
Oh, oh, no, Panera Bread? Oh, Sprout. Oh, it's Mediterranean.
Oh, Mediterranean?
Yes.
In either case, then, Sprouts would be a great anchor.
Oh, yeah, we agree.
And that bread would have come in at one time?
Who? A Panera Bread? No, no.
No?
No.
That was, it was Chick-fil-A that was, and then they backed out, right?
Yes.
Did that have anything to do with our city, or just that they were, I think you said they were putting in a couple of new ones and they didn't?
Yeah, the area was oversaturated for right now. It might be ready in a couple of years.
Oh, okay. But no Trader Joe's?
No. And no, 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 no In-N-Out either.
And no In-N-Out.
Were any of those in the mix?
No, it was always Sprouts.
So they weren't even considered.
No.
Sprouts is a good anchor for the city.
I think that, I agree.
Well, the last question I have is, we were talking about, where can a guy pick up some Paramount gear, like sweatshirts, t-shirts, hats, things like that?
We could get that for you.
No, I mean, but is there a place where the residents?
We don't, oh, no, we don't have a store. They're working on that.
Oh, they are working on it?
Yes, uh-huh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We'll get you a hat.
Yeah, I've had a number of people ask me about that. Yeah, because I've got kind of a cool, well, I know, I just wondered, yeah. I got a nice, it's like a workout shirt. It's a gray one, looks like, you know, the athletes wear. Says, I think it says, "Property of Paramount, established nineteen fifty-seven."
Oh, yeah, that's a nice shirt, yeah.
Yeah, it's a nice one, it's cool. But I've never seen them around for sale or anything like that, you know?
Yeah, it's, Administrative Services is working on that.
Oh, good. I think that would be a hit with them.
I do, too.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It'd be a hit with us, too.
I guess they're, well, they're still working on, working on it, yeah. So there might be like a store or?
Maybe like an online store.
On online?
Yeah.
That's a deal.
Okay. Well, they probably got Paramount High stuff.
They do.
Yeah.
You can buy that at the school.
Yeah, I think you gotta go to the school. I think you do, yeah. Go to the, probably activities office. Or call them. You could probably buy one. Most of them are doing credit cards now with the schools even. Probably order one and pick it up at the school.
Everything's online.
Yeah, everything's online. Okay, any other questions from the commissioners, comments? Staff?
Yeah, two things. In your binder is the invitation for next week's reorganization at the city council. That's, so Tuesday, April night. It's starting with a reception at five thirty. And second thing, I think some of you, maybe all of you, know that I'm gonna retire in mid-August. And last week, John Moreno announced that John King, when I retire, will be appointed the interim director of the department. And I'm sure he's gonna do a great job and will shortly become the permanent director. So you all will be in good hands.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
John King, congratulations. Okay?
Wonderful.
There were some rumors out there, John, and didn't want to ask, but congratulations, congratulations. Yeah, I recommend retirement, so I'm not, okay? And then you go on cruises like me.
I wonder he's smiling so much, shouldn't I?
Yeah, smile, ear to ear smile.
Yes, of course.
Okay, okay, I guess that's it then. Then let's have to adjourn the meeting then, and we'll, next time, we will reconvene on May first, June twenty-four at six PM.
It was April twenty-third. Okay, six? All right. Okay. I called Paramount Development Review Board to order. May we have roll call, please?
Board Member Sparza. Board Member Gonzalez.
Here.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Here.
Vice Chair Moody. Chair Timmons.
Here. And may I have approval of minutes, please, for our last meeting? Roll call, please.
Board Member Sparza. Board Member Gonzalez.
Stand.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Moody. Chair Timmons.
Yes. Okay, so under new business now, we have a public hearing for requests by Jesus Soto, D. Soto, blueprints for Elijah's Park to remodel a three hundred and twenty-four square foot commercial building at one five five two three Lakewood Boulevard in the C three general commercial zone. So do we have a staff report?
Madam Chair, John King went through the details of that remodel. We can look at it again if you would like. Otherwise, it would be recommended to open the public hearing.
Okay, let's open the public hearing. Is there any testimony?
No testimony.
No testimony? Okay, I need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Board Member Sparza. Board Member Gonzalez.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Moody. Chair Timmons.
Yes. And now may I have a motion to approve the request by Jesus Soto, D. Soto, blueprints for Elijah's Park to remodel a three hundred and forty-two square foot commercial building at one five five two three Lakewood Boulevard in the C three zone.
Gonzalez moves to approve?
Roll call, please.
Board Member Sparza. Board Member Gonzalez.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Moody. Chair Timmons.
Yes. Under comments. Do we have any comments from our board? Staff?
No.
No comments from our board, no comments from staff? Okay, I move to adjourn our meeting until the next meeting in May.
Actually, we need to adjourn this meeting to the April meeting. It's a special meeting, joint meeting with the city council.
It's right in front of me. To April twenty-third.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
To adjourn April twenty-third at four PM. Yeah, this is, it will be the special meeting with council, is that correct?
All right. Good evening, Paramount Economic Development Board, April third meeting. Now we have roll call, please.
Board Member Sparza. Board Member Timmons.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger. Vice Chair Moody. Chair Gonzalez.
Here.
May I get a motion to approve the minutes of March sixth meeting, please?
Timmons, so moved.
Roll call, please.
Board Member Sparza. Board Member Timmons.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Moody. Chair Gonzalez.
Do we have any public comments? New business?
No public comments.
Oral report?
Yes, I'm going to give you an oral report on the Planning Department twenty twenty-three year in review. John, can I get the remote? Okay, so as you know, in the planning department, we have the Building and Safety Division, the Planning Division, and we also handle housing. In the Building and Safety Division, a total of eight hundred and forty-one permits were issued and three thousand three hundred and thirty-one inspections were performed in twenty twenty-three. The total project valuation of permits was nearly eighty-eight point six million dollars. In twenty twenty-three, we implemented a complete online process for submitting building plans for plan check and instituted a paperless permit process. In the Planning Division, we processed eighty-six applications for home additions. These also include numerous ADUs. We also reviewed fifteen development review applications, twenty-five conditional use permits, three filming permits, three zoning ordinance amendments, three zone changes, one general plan amendment, and one tentative parcel map. In twenty twenty-three, seventy-six rooftop solar panel projects were approved, with twenty-five projects completed. Here are a look at some of the projects that took place in twenty twenty-three. Kentucky Fried Chicken was completed, and projects began at Planet Fitness in the Walmart Shopping Center. Tiara Mia Coffee on Downey and Roast Crans continues, and the Ghost Store itself storage facility on Minnesota south of Alondra was begun. In the Home Improvement Program, three projects were completed and two mobile home remodel projects began. As you can see in the picture of the completed project on San Vicente Street, there is no landscaping. The federal funds that we use for this program only allow improvements to the home. During the mid-year budget review, the city council approved general fund money to complete site improvements, which will include landscaping, fencing, and new driveways. It's been a very busy year with long-range plans. As you know, a long-range plan is an important planning tool that lays out the development of a specific area many years into the future. Long-range plans are very specific and incorporate definitive zoning regulations. These types of plans usually take decades to implement. The North Paramount Gateway Specific Plan was adopted last year, and we began work on the Clearwater Specific Plan, the Public Art Master Plan, Commercial Design Guidelines, Residential Objective Design Guidelines, and the Historic Context Statement. It's been a busy year for these plans. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have one question. Can we go back to the Tiara Mia? What's taking so long for that? Seems like they've changed it a couple times.
Sure. So, well, it started out with the owner of Tiara Mia hiring his pool contractor to start the job for him. He liked the job he did at his pool at his home, so obviously not qualified to do a commercial building. So that person was fired, and they've been going through several just issues. It seems to be moving quicker now. So we're hopeful for this summer that things will open. Yep.
Thank you.
Well, John, are these, can this thing just keep going on and being delayed indefinitely?
Well, they continue to, they continue to work even though it's slowly. So as long as you do that and you call for inspections, your permits are continuous. If you were to stop and not renew your permits, then they would expire.
My wife and I, we'd like to go to Baskin Robbins over there.
Oh, do you? Yeah, well, yeah.
Same little area. And I can just imagine, their parking, you know, it used to have easy access.
Yeah.
They're off of Downey Avenue. Now you gotta go all the way around, kind of in a little dead end there.
Right.
And they're probably wondering when all that's gonna be gone.
Yeah.
I wouldn't like that if I was.
I wouldn't either, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, hopefully they're competing sooner than later. It will be a great addition if you guys ever had their product.
Yeah, their food, their food is really nice.
Oh, so they have food, too?
Yeah, they have pastries and sandwiches and.
That's what I'm wondering, what's taking so long?
I know. Well, there's, the funny thing is, so on my way home, there's an old donut shop on Carson, Carson and Cherry, and it closed. And it was closed for, I don't think even a month, and the Tiara Mia opened a month later. So I don't, I don't know what happened there. And this place is crazy busy, too, so, yeah.
The food is really good.
Any other comments or questions? Just hope they come here and they compete soon. Any staff?
No, sir.
But I don't mind, we'll adjourn our Paramount Economic Development Board to our meeting on May first, six PM.